God sent His Son. God sent forth His Son. A good way to look at the awesomeness of this group of information is that He sent His Son into human history. Remember that if I could get AC, Brother Matthews, and preacher, if you would, just come up here, and you can even, I won't have you standing long, you can even sit down. I know how important it is, at my age, to sit down every now and then, but stand behind the pulpit. If they represent the Godhead, we recognize that the Godhead is comprised of... God is a triune God, is comprised of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Let's see, Father... Wait, 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 old bearded one, right? Father, Son, Holy Spirit. When he says "God," the word there is the Elohim, the triune God. Sent His Son into... Just go right out in the middle of that. He sent His Son into human history. I mean, that's incredible that... Come back. That God, the Elohim, the Godhead, the God of all creation, would send His Son to dwell among us in the human history. When did He do it? In the fullness of the time. Let's do this. This... No, I'm gonna give you assignment in a minute. So, "In the fullness of the time, God sent His Son..." Okay, go back. How did He do it? How did He make this happen? So now we have two... What we're gonna do tonight is study this information concerning the event itself, okay? The other two phrases gives us some information as to how He brought that about. He says, "Born of a woman." And why that's important, and why use a woman? In Genesis, Adam doesn't have a mother. He made Adam. So we know He can do it, right? Why use a woman? Don't answer that, just, this is information you wanna wrestle with. Why use a woman? Why did He have to use a woman? Why couldn't He just speak it and it happened? After all, He did all creation this way, and God said, "Let there be." So we know He's able to do that. He's capable of doing that. And yet, in this case, He uses the womb of a woman. What's so awesome is that God allows Himself to be restricted to the womb of a woman to be born. There's all kinds of information in that, okay? So He's born, He comes into human history, born of a woman, and then the second part of it is He is born under the law. So He brings Him at a time where He's born under the mosaic law. He's born under Judaism, okay? And so we're gonna look at why all that is, and how it makes sense, and why it's important to us. And I want, you're gonna leave with at least one thought, and that is, I... This is my purpose, thank you preacher. My purpose is, I want us to be impressed with the awesomeness of His person. Some of our challenge on Sunday morning is how we see Him affecting how we come to Him. A.W. Tozer said, "No nation, no group of people will rise above their view of God." Douglas Garrett wrote a song, "I Saw the Lord," right out of Isaiah, Chapter 6. "In the year that King Uzai died, I saw the Lord." How did I see Him northeast? High and lifted up, because it's important that we have a high view of God, okay? From the study, the section of information that says He brought Him into human history and the means He used to do that, I hope, I'm prayerful, I'm gonna do the best I can to have that give us a view of Him, this awesome creature. This God-man comes into human history at a time predetermined by the God. Okay? All right. So that's the close reading. There's an event? What's the event? God sent His Son. And another way to say it is He sends His Son into human history. That's the event. When did He do it? In the fullness of time. How did He bring this about? Born of a woman, born under the law. All that is in verse 4. That's close reading, okay? Any question about that? Let's look at this event. He says, "He sent His Son." That took us back to Luke, Chapter 1. Luke is a narrative, right? And in Luke, Chapter 1, and this is review, I gotta do this real quickly, or I won't get to the other body of information. Luke says that there are two birth announcements. The first announcement was to Zachariah and his wife, Elizabeth. Let me work over here. That means I'm coming to you, okay? So that means the smart ones are already reading the second birth announcement, okay? Where's the first birth announcement start? Verse what? Guys, you can sit down. Yeah, if you wanna go back, that's fine, that's fine. Verse 5. "There was in the days of Herod, the king of Judea, a certain priest named Zacharias of the division of Abijah. His wife was of the daughters of Aaron, a priestly tribe, and her name was Elizabeth." Now, without reading that, there were two barriers to what the announcement was. The announcement says, "They were both righteous before God, walking in all the commandments and ordinances of the Lord, blameless, but they had no child." And why did they have no child? Barrier number one is Elizabeth was barren. And that means what? She couldn't have children. There's some biological situation, something physical, that made it where she could not bear children, okay? And then there was a second barrier, which was what? Age. She was past the childbearing time. Two barriers, okay? So when John was born, what message do you think was sent to Zachariah and Elizabeth? And I want the answer from this side, and I'm gonna be asking you similar questions. What message then was sent? Here's Elizabeth, she's barren, she can't have children, and now her biological time clock has clocked out. It's stopped ticking, thank you. So when she looks up and she is with child, what message did that send? Yeah, there you go. God is what? God can do. If God says it, He has the capacity to do. How does that help me? See, that's how you make the Bible helpful to you. How's it help me? Have you ever been dependent on a promise that God makes? And it seems like it's not gonna, can't happen that way. My God is able. That oughta be worth coming to Bible study for. My God is able. The same God that was able for Elizabeth and Zachariah is the same God I believe in today, okay? First, that was the first birth announcement. Second birth announcement was to who? Mary. And that announcement was that He was gonna bring into human history His Son, right? Barrier, two barriers. Barrier number one, this wrote, "Barry..." What was the first barrier? She didn't know a man. In fact, let's go to that, let's go to... Craig, you with me? Verse 26. "In the six months, the angel Gabriel was sent by God to a city of Galilee named Nazareth, to a virgin." Barrier number one, she's virgin. She's betrothed. What does that mean, Corey? Betrothed. She's engaged. Very good. So she's engaged to a man named Joseph. He's of the house of David. The virgin's name was Mary. Having come in, the angel said to her, "Rejoice, highly favored one, the Lord is with you. Blessed are you among women." But when she saw him, she was troubled at the saying... Help me somebody. Yeah, this ain't right. I ain't married. How I'm gonna go home and explain to mama? What mama gonna think? And not just mama, what daddy gonna think? Plus, he's born under the law. So the Levitical law said, "Come up pregnant if you want to." 13th chapter, Leviticus, he talks about, "You get married, we have the right as the men of the city, especially if an accusation is made against you that you have been promiscuous." Literally, the wording was, "You've played the harlot in your daddy's house, you could be stoned." If you didn't have proof of your virginity, the tokens of your virginity. Anybody know what that language is about? Somebody tell us, what would be the tokens of your virginity? Somebody, yes. Tell them. The soiled bed linen. That means that on the wedding night, they go in and consummate... Come on, y'all, we all adults, right? Drawing all up and stuff? They go in and consummate the marriage. Now, before the marriage, she was to be a virgin. Virginity says that she is made anatomically, from an anatomy standpoint, with a flesh wall that is covered by something called a hymen. God, when He made the man, made him with genitalia. That, that's why marriage is a covenant, and covenants are confirmed by blood. So what happens then is when there is the union of the male factor, breaks the hymen to go into the flesh wall, there is blood. The blood will stain the bed. When the marriage was consummated, the bed linen, the stained bed linen, had to be kept, usually by the girl's mama. So that if the man said... I wish we could talk, you know? I ain't the first woman. See, in a court of law, it ain't what you... It's what you can prove. Talk, Crenshaw. You better be able to prove it, "I'm innocent," okay? Prove it, okay? The proof was, if the man made the accusation that she was not a virgin, then mama, the men of the city, would come outside the door, and mama would go in, get that stain sheet out the trunk, and they would unfold it before the elders of the city. Okay? All right? Any question about that? So chastity was a premium. Isn't it interesting, y'all, how far afield we've gone from God's order? So when the announcement was made to Mary, Mary say, "I got problems, y'all. I got problems." What's her problem? Yes, yes. But what's her problem? She's a virgin. But what else is a problem? How's she gonna explain this pregnancy? She can't explain it. Then the penalty for it was to be stoned. You know, when you hear people talk about, "I keep the law," or "I wanna go back to..." That's why grace is so important. You can be a law keeper if you want to. I need God's grace. I need His mercy. Sisters, come on, say amen. I mean, you know... Okay, let me hurry, y'all. Y'all not helping me here, but... So she's got, her issue is, "How am I gonna explain this? They not gonna believe me. I have no tokens of virginity, and so I'm gonna be stoned." That's all that's on. You talk about a stressful pregnancy. It's interesting that she goes to Elizabeth. In fact, Gabriel tells her, "Go to Elizabeth." Why? Why she told to go to Elizabeth? Yeah, similar, Elizabeth ain't supposed to be pregnant either. That's why sometime our testimony is helpful. Sometime y'all oughta be able to tell your story. Tell somebody how God brought you through. Tell somebody, "My God is able." Is that all right, somebody? Now, so you go to Elizabeth, that's the first birth announcement. So what you take from this is that God is what? God is able. Now, I want, I'm gonna deal with the event itself. I want this group over here, I want you to take that section, the notion, "Born of a woman," why that's important. Why is it important that, preacher, come here, that when God sent Him into human history, that He used a woman? I want you to be able to talk about why that's important. She says, "I don't know a man," and yet she is betrothed, she's engaged, to who? Joseph. Come here, Joseph. And I use this to, it's kind of an interactive, I want you to see it, okay? She's engaged to a man, okay? So it could be said, "You ain't no virgin." That's why, that's why in a court of public opinion, there was a lot of controversy about who his daddy was. Come on, y'all, right here in the United States of America, you come up pregnant, one of the first things they ask? Yeah, yeah, yeah. And don't be engaged. Better hope that the daddy is the one you engaged, you know... Why is that important? Why is that important? There are, I'm gonna give you the answer, but there are young people, there are children born right here, who people will have snide remarks. You don't even know who your daddy is. And what that says about your mother. And I'm from that culture where we call it playing the dozen. Y'all don't know nothing about this stuff, do you? Come on, old people, help me right through here. Don't talk about my... You wanna get in a fight, talk about mama. What does that say to a little boy who was born out of wedlock? That's some good, that's some good stuff. I want you to talk about, I want you to be able to talk, what does that say to a little boy born out of wedlock? Now, this is kind of where you take your halos off, right? I mean, I know y'all ain't nobody in here, you know, and nobody got that problem, but I know some folk that do. And one of the things that it says is that God can take anybody and make him somebody. Glory, hallelujah. God can take a nobody and make him somebody. I've used my family as examples of stuff all my life, and I'm 103 now, so it ain't no sense of stopping now, but one of the most precious young men in my life was born out of wedlock. And one of the reasons I love Him so, Michi, is He had all the reason in the world to not do good. Born out of wedlock, father incarcerated since he was five years old. All the reason in the world. Do you think I'm not proud that he's a single in high school? Raised by a single mom? What does that say to single mothers? Says you can do it. Says you can do it. Somebody oughta share that the next time. Yeah, somebody, hold that girl's hand. Instead of condemning them and talking about them, hold her hand and say, "Sweetheart, let me tell you something. I read in Luke, Chapter 1." Yeah. That there was some controversy about Mary getting pregnant before she and Joseph... Shannon, I guess you're gonna have to be married now, so just, come on out here with I just want you to see this. She's engaged to him. She's with child before the wedding. What y'all gonna say? Not what they gonna say. Did you know folk in the church talk about people? Ah, I mean, I... Do you know folk, y'all, do you know folk in the church can be cruel? This story will help Shannon. Have that baby Shannon and raise him. And you can do it. You can do it, and there's an example right there. And you can be a good... Shannon said, "Let's clear this up right now." Yeah, yeah. But you can do it. I wanna say that, you know, my baby won't be the last woman to get pregnant out of wedlock. Fathers, if you raise daughters, you are susceptible to it happening to you. Just because you go to church don't mean that can't happen to you. Just because you were a good father does not mean it can't happen to you. I wish somebody knew what I was talking about. You, 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 you know, you are not immune to trouble with your holy self. It can happen, and don't ever say what your child won't do. When they ask me to talk, I got a son, and people know about the accident since Proctor, and they say, "How is your boy?" And, "Hold on, it was terrible that it happened. Did he have children?" And I'll say, "He never been married, never fathered a child." Come here. Then I quickly add, "That we know of." You know why I do that? Don't, 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 don't say what your... And the next time you go to point the finger at some... Is that right? And just because you got past, you always grown now and everything? That's why we oughta have compassion for each other, sensitivity about each other. Sensitivity about each other. And our world just does not have the kind of sensitivity we ought to have. So anyway, anyway. So how's this gonna happen? Baby, you, you know, y'all ain't got together. So how's it gonna happen? No, stay over there now. I need one more, Jonathan's time, this Gabriel. I want y'all to see it, this Gabriel. And so, and so, and so, and so Shannon, I mean Mary, says to Gabriel, "How's this gonna happen?" Watch his answer. I don't have my glasses on, get, get to that, whatever that verse is. Craig. Okay. The angel answered and said, he talking to who? Shannon, I mean, to Mary. And he says, "The Holy Spirit..." Now I need the Godhead back up here. You seeing this? "The Holy Spirit." Well, let's see. You wanna be Jesus? Okay, okay. "The Holy Spirit..." Come here, Matthew. "The Holy Spirit is gonna come upon you." Is that what it said? Y'all reading it? Don't let me read it wrong, is that, is that what it says? "The Holy Spirit is gonna come upon you." And "the power of the highest is gonna overshadow you." Ooh, excuse me. Get, get close up in here. Y'all can't do no good. Okay? And then it says what? "So..." Therefore, they, wait, 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 wait. What I'm trying to teach you is that this is closer reading. Every word is important. When you study the Bible, you can't run over even punctuation. Therefore, is therefore in there? Therefore, because of this, the, that Holy One who is to be born will be called the Son of God. This is an incredible creature. Now, let's, let's explore one other body of information here, okay? There were other beings known as sons of God. Okay? Turn to Genesis, chapter six. Now I'm gonna give some assignments, so you really kinda need to pay attention to all of this. Genesis chap- chapter six. Verse one says, and, and you gotta do this quickly, cause my time is, is almost gone. "It came to pass when men began to..." One of the reasons I asked you to participate in the reading is it, it does a couple things, help keep you awake. You know? And it helps me know if you are really, you ain't zoned out, okay? "It came to pass when men began to multiply on the face of the earth and daughters were born to them" that, give me, give me, give, uh, Smith and, uh, give me a couple, two or three guys. Yeah, thank you, Paul. The earth became, becomes more densely populated, and he says, "Separate yourself." Sons of God. Yeah, get some definition, you, come on, Smith, over here. These are sons of God. And that, is that what the text says? Sons of God. Luke chapter one, he's gonna be called the son of God. What's the difference? Hang on, hang on, what's? Make you wanna, make you wanna do this, don't it? What's the difference between him? See, there's none like him. But they were sons of God. Okay? And these sons of God saw who? All you, all you sisters stand up, just stand up where y'all. All of you. Boy, taking y'all a long time, man. No, not, Proctor, that's alright, baby, me and you can, we don't have, we don't do that. The, 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 the sons of God saw how pretty y'all were. That, that got Proctor up, boy. That what I'm talking about. Yeah. Sons of God saw daughters of men. You know, it's, it's interesting, ladies, and I, you know, I've been preaching long enough now, I can, I can talk like this. When you, when you come outdoors, when you come out in the public, they already in trouble? Get, get, come, stand up there where they can see you. They already in trouble? God made them with something called libido. Somebody look at that. A sex drive. Huh? God made them with a sex drive. And he made you all pretty. You desirable. So when you come to church, that's why the Bible says you need to have something called modesty. Glory, hallelujah. And the reason you need to, and this is good for young girls, I, I tell, I got granddaughters, pretty ones. Amen, wait, what? I got two here tonight. Just, I tell them they pretty all the time. Daddy, tell, tell your daughter she's pretty. Often. You know why? Thank you, AC. That's right. And you, and when she starts getting attention, you, you don't want her going crazy, I mean, losing perspective. My girls, I used to hold them up and just, and just tell them they pretty, and, and tell their daddy love them. You are, fathers, that's why it's important that fathers stay in the house. You are the first man that she falls in love with. And you have a profound effect on how she deals with a man, thank you. Me and him, but we got a big task. It's more to being a father than supplying sperm. I know y'all don't like to, I mean, you know, but this is just right. It's just right. Tell them you love them. Tell them they pretty. Because Jody is gonna come by. Come on, old guys, help me, you, you know who Jody is? Ain't nobody here named Jody, is it? Yeah, 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 Jody gonna come by? And whisper, that was, in fact, that was a god, I'm gonna show you, I got, I got, I think it's a slide, I'm gonna show you. See, there are a lot of gods. There was a god who was the god of, yeah, yeah, yeah. We gonna get to that demigod, there's another slide, man, for the Egyptian gods. And there was one, no, this ain't Isis, there was a god who was like the god of whispers, of, of, uh, sex talk. Come on, y'all. Hey, look, look at that, look at that. There's a god, a god in Armenian mythology, look at Aztec mythology, goddess of fertility, beauty, female sexual power, protection of young mothers, pregnancy, childbirth, and women's crafts. But there's one, look for it, there's one where he, he's the god of, uh, like sex talk or whispering. There are guys, if you raising a daughter, there are guys who are smooth talkers. Uh, you know, y'all, y'all just, see, you're so holy, you can't, you can't learn some of this stuff. They are, they out there, thank you. What is it? Slick Willie? Who said that? That ain't up there. It might oughta be. Yeah, yeah, Eros, god of love, sexual passion, and naughty thoughts. I don't want none of y'all to be Eros, I don't, I don't... And all of this stuff, you can be gifted with it, and it's a gift, but there's a way to use it. That's why marriage is important. Eroticism is important. God gave it to you. But he wants you to use it legally. He wants you to have sexual thoughts. Just not about anybody other than your wife. You know, one one of the issues that's plaguing this society right now is pornography. And we too, and we too holy in the church to talk about it, but holy men in the church can get caught up and it can ruin your relationship. I don't know how I got off on this, but anyhow, I'm out there now. So, so sisters and older women teach younger women about modesty. Don't come in here showing, uh, Proctor say everything you got. Don't do that, it's not fair to them. Raise your hand, man, it ain't, not you, you ain't up there. You get up there to... You know, you know, listen, listen, listen. If, if the, y'all come here, come here, come here and listen to me. If these angelic beings, if these spirit, powerful spirit beings couldn't resist, what you think we gonna, come on, y'all. That's why it says, "Men ought to always pray." No, that ain't why I said it. That's why, where's Kevin? Kevin was up here making the announcement about a men's ministry? And some of you already made your mind, you're not gonna be a part of it. But that's why we need each other, men. That's why we need, I need you, you need me. Iron can sharpen iron. And we can hold each other accountable. Don't you think for a minute it won't happen to you? Let me tell you something else, just cause you get older? Amen, amen. I know y'all wish I'd hurry up and get off of this, so. Y'all just sit down, just sit down. Pray to the Lord. What? All I wanna do is, what makes him different? Okay? They're sons of God. And in Genesis one, watch what happens. They took, y'all reading this with me? "They took wives for themselves of all whom they chose." That's as fresh as the morning paper. There are men who grow up in environments that teach you that the mark of being a man is how many women you can take to bed. I ain't gonna teach no more, I, this, I'm, I'm gonna get this out and I'm, and I'll... I'm trying to help somebody. I've been around long enough to know this stuff happens. Okay? "Lord said, 'My spirit shall not strive with the..." What's the verse before that? That's the one I want. Why you jumping? Huh? You, you didn't know I wanted that one? "Some of God saw daughters of men, that, that they were beautiful, they took wives for themselves of all whom they chose." Okay? "The Lord said, 'My spirit is not gonna, uh, strive with man forever, for he is indeed flesh, yet his day shall be one hundred and twenty years.'" Come on. There were giants on the earth in, in those days. And also afterward, when the sons of God came into the daughters of men, that's another word for sexual engagement. They bore children of them. And so there was a race of people. They called them the Nephilim. Now, and, and I, and, and I'm just gonna hurry up and do this, okay? We'll do some more detail. But Luke's writing in Luke chapter one, just listen to me, cause you ain't got time to take you back over there. But Luke chapter one says that Luke's gospel is a researched gospel. That means Luke read other sources. Now, there are a lot of writings that predate the gospel of Luke. And in that body of religious writings are beings that are called sec- that are called sexual deities. And so in order to discredit his conception, there are scholars who suggest that all he is, he's no more than things that happened in mythology prior to what Luke wrote, where sexual deities cohabitated with women. That's why I asked the question, "Who is his daddy?" That's why I asked the question, and don't run over this, don't just decide I already know. And, and see, when you decide that, I can't teach you nothing. There's volumes of information. There's volumes of information that none of you have. That's why when you come, it's about study. It's about working through this. And what it's gonna do is give you an appreciation for who he is. I gotta get through. I've been having y'all standing a long time, I'm sorry. Sit down. Not you, preacher. I need you. Brother, thank you all too. I mean, you, you help. Let's give them a love deposit. Thank you all. Let's especially give one to Mary. Thank you, Shannon. I wanna give you an appreciation for who he is. When these sexual deities had intercourse with women, it produced a whole body of people that in mythology are called demigods. How many of you have heard that term? Demigod. What's a demigod? James, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry. Uh, name me a famous, uh, demigod. Hercules. Thank you. Yeah. Who else? Purses. I thought somebody was gonna say Optimus Prime, I, you know. But really, some of the movies you watch, some of the movies our children watch are based off of that notion. Half man, half deity. And they wanna say, that's what he is. He's a demigod produced by a sexual deity. That's why Luke one is so important. He says that the spirit, the Holy Spirit... Stand up, Mary. The Holy... Come on, Shannon, stay with your preacher. I'm s- okay. The Holy Spirit is gonna come upon you. That's the Holy Spirit of God. And the power of the Most High will cover you. That means there ain't no creature ever like this one. That's why the Hebrew writer, we just got through studying priesthood. That's why the Hebrew writer would say, he's better. Yeah, he better than angels. He's better than Hercules. There ain't nobody like him. Nobody that, that's why he's called God's only. That distinguishes him from any concept you have of God. He is God's only, watch this, begotten. That's why the Luke passage is so important. The Holy Spirit is gonna come upon her. The power of the Most High is gonna cover her. Therefore, he's different from anything you ever thought of. He's not a demigod. He's not produced by just a deviant, out of control, sexual deity. He's not the product of a lustful, overpowering deity. He is, he's incredible, Corey. Nothing ever, you can't even imagine him. Let me close with this, let you go home. There's a lot of detail that I'm skating over, but we'll get to it. Put that picture, that first picture up there. He is... Somebody say, he's better. Beautiful. And incredible. Oh, God. He, he's not half and half. If he was half and half, he'd be a demigod. He's all... Where you go, man? Come here. He's all God. He's not fifty-fifty. He's all God. And he's all man. Somebody say, well, that can't be. I know it. He can't be a hundred percent one and a hundred percent the other. I know it. Only God. That's why I started with the birth announcement. Ain't nothing impossible for him. Let me leave you with this. Can you see him? Can you see how beautiful he is? How awesome he is? Oh, God. Oh, man. Oh, God, he has everything under his control. He can speak to the wind. He can speak to the storm and say, peace, be still. He can heal. He can, there ain't nothing, somebody say, nothing. There ain't nothing he can't do. Is he beautiful to you? Is he an awesome creature? This awesome being comes into human history. We getting ready to go home. This awesome, somebody say, awesome. This unbelievable, somebody say, unbelievable being comes into human history. Show the next picture. And look what we did to him. Look what we did. God sent. That's, I just want you to see the event. God sent. He went to the trouble to sin. His only begotten, not just, not only son, his only begotten son. And what did we do? We beat him. We bloodied his face. We spat on him. And we hung him on a tree. You say, I didn't do it? Yes, you did. Because it was my sins and it was your sins that crucified my Lord. Smith, remember Sam Cooke? Soul Stirrer? One of the songs I used to love to hear him sing. Were you there when they crucified my Lord? You're not getting out of your part. It's my sin. It's my degradation. It's my soiled life. That's why on Sunday morning, when I come into the house of prayer, I'm coming into his presence. I need to come in here begging for forgiveness full of thanksgiving. Thank you, Lord, for what you've done for me. Let's pray. Father, thank you for Jesus. My human intelligence cannot fully comprehend his awesomeness. Oh, how great thou art. There's none like you. Just the concept is beyond my imagination. Thank you for his blood, for without his death, I'd have no forgiveness of sin. Without his death, I would still fear death. But because he died, Lord, you have overcome Satan, death, hell, and the grave. Thank you, Lord. As I confess my unworthiness and the unworthiness of this thy people, may it cause me to be more thankful than I've ever been at any other time in my life. Thank you that your love is manifest through him. Thank you for Advent teaching. Thank you for opportunities to learn more about you so that we can better praise your name. Thank you, Father, for being pleased to save us. And even now, if you grant us the favor of being more like you and more thankful, more appreciative, we'll be carefully give you the glory in Jesus' precious name. Amen. Thank you all.